Valentine's Day, everyone. And we're going to begin with the invocation from Councilman Nguyen, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please stand.
Let us pray. We pray for our mayor, city council, first responders, city staff, all who serve our local community, and we also pray for all our citizens of our community. Strengthen all of us with your wisdom and grace. Keep our hearts pure and our eyes turned towards your face, and may we always remember it is to your glory that we all serve. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to begin with the minutes from January the 10th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Nguyen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to do an award. We're going to start. Michael Howes is going to do a presentation, and then we're going to come down and have a quick mixture.
Oh, fantastic. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to be able to present this award. In 1991, City of Tyler sent the first two East Texas teachers to Yachio, Japan, to work in junior high schools along Japanese exchange teachers as a one-year pilot program. The successful collaboration led to the twinning of Tyler and Yachio in 1992. In the years since the twinning, a strong relationship has developed between the two cities, resulting in a coveted trip rotation shared between the two cities, usually coinciding with the Rose Festival and the activities occurring in Tyler and Yachio. These biannual trips aim to increase collaborations between both cities by keeping city contacts current and bringing representatives from businesses and educational facilities in both cities and bringing those together. Due to the COVID pandemic, the regular trips between the two communities had to be postponed until international travel between both countries had been lifted. And also during this delay, that was when there was supposed to be the celebration of the 30th anniversary of the twinning between the two cities, which was to occur in 2022. So in November of 2023, a small recreational group from Tyler traveled to Yachio, which included Jennifer Rader, who is the current Sister Cities president. And she was given the award that we are presenting to the council today, which is a gift that comes from the mayor of Yachio, Japan. In order to give a little bit of information, background on the trip, and discussion about the award itself, I do have with me Laura Duramo, who was one of the teachers who has served as part of the twinning that has just kind of kept that collaboration going and a participant on the trip. So to talk about that experience, I'll turn it over to her.
Sounds good. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Laura Duramo, and I, as Michael mentioned, I taught in Yachio City for two years as a junior high school English teacher. One of the best experiences of my life by far. So this past November, I got the opportunity to join the trip to go back and visit. So if you look to the screens, we have some of the pictures that we took during that trip. The people of Yachio were very gracious and allowed us the opportunity to participate in many different cultural activities. They threw us some pretty great welcome and sign-on parties. And this slide in particular, you can see in the center, there is a picture of a flower that is actually from the Kasei Rose Garden, which is one of the similarities that we share with Yachio City. And we both have rose gardens. But yeah, we had a great time. We were able to try on traditional wear. We went to Tokyo and visited the Hokkaido Museum, some different shrines. We ate a lot of really amazing food. I don't know if any of you have been to Japan, but if you haven't, I highly recommend going and just eating. It's pretty great. And then, yes, we, they installed, if you see the picture on the left there, there is an installment for the 30th anniversary of the relationship between Yachio and Tyler, which is what this award here is representing. And then, side note, a fun little fact, if you see the picture on the right, that is actually not Santa Claus. That is our great Colonel Sanders from Kentucky Fried Chicken. And yes, it is actually very traditional in Japan during Christmas to go to KFC and eat chicken. And yeah, Colonel Sanders is like Christmas, right? So yeah, that is a fun, fun little fact. But we also got to visit the Houses of Parliament, which was really cool. That's something that I never did when I was there, so, like, teaching. So yeah, that was really great. So without further ado, I will read what is inscribed on the award. So we have appropriately named this award the Yachi Commemorative Shield. Yachi is actually the mascot of Yachio City. I wish I had a picture of him, but he's like a little bird. He's really cute. So what it says is to Mr. Donald P. Warren, Mayor, City of Tyler. The City of Tyler and City of Yachio have concluded the agreement of international Sister Cities twinning on the 16th day of May, 1992. In commemoration of the Sister Cities Exchange, activities lasting between our cities for such a long period of three decades, we are honored with Mr. Hattori's compliments to present hereby a memorial shield to the City of Tyler, Texas, USA, May 2022. And that is from Tonomori Hattori, Mayor, City of Yachio, Chiba Prefecture, Japan.
Well, thank you for that. We're going to come take a picture, but before that, I will say we had the privilege of going to Yachio, I believe it was in 2018.
Yeah, I think that was.
And it was a great trip. And the thing about Yachio and Mayor Hattori is there was a relationship there. And a friendship has developed that's been really good. And they were kind enough to bring back a gift to me from Mayor Hattori. And we've gotten to where we know each other well enough to where he knows what I like. And what he gave me was a bourbon glass. And it was a bourbon glass that was made in Japan, and it works well. So anyway, I'm glad y'all went. Thank you for continuing to that relationship, and we'll come down and take a picture.
Mr. Mayor, I want to question 2023 for council members to go to Japan.
It's a budgetary issue. All right, R1, Kyle.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
This item is a request that the city council consider adoption of a resolution in support of various affordable housing tax credit proposals and the approval of a waiver of development and permit fees and the amount of $500 for each project awarded. The Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, or TDHCA, Housing Tax Credit Program is one of the primary means to direct private capital toward the development and preservation of affordable housing. Tax credits are awarded to eligible participants to offset a portion of their federal tax liability in exchange of development of affordable housing within the state. The allocation of tax credits is a very competitive process. We do this annually for various, various projects. These projects receive, any project awarded or that receives a resolution of support, receive 17 points towards their, their application. A City of Tyler Resolution of Support for Projects will strengthen the developers' application to receive an allocation of low-income housing tax credits through the TDHCA. Various entities are requesting a resolution of support for their individual applications from the City of Tyler. That would significantly improve their opportunity to receive those credits. We received three, three requests for a resolution of support this year. I'm going to go through each, each project briefly. I believe we do have representatives from each project here to speak about their, their application. So the first one is for more grocery lofts. Typically, the projects we see every year are for new construction. This is for rehabilitation or renovation of the existing residential units at the grocery loft, which is just a few blocks from here off Broadway downtown. The, the project includes the renovation of 88, 88, 88 units that are currently existing. Various changes to, you know, from different bedrooms or bedroom levels, three to two or whatnot, just some renovations to the existing units that are in the building. The, the, the project is, is not necessarily marketed to 55-plus. It's for general population to utilize the residential units on the property. And this project for really having more grocery lofts downtown helps, helps implement our, our plans for, again, downtown housing and the preservation of that. The next project is the Reserve at Tyler, which is located on the East Loop, just north of Fifth Street, before, between Fifth Street and Old Henderson Highway on the East Loop. This project is for the new development of a multifamily project consisting of 84 units. As you can see here, the, the layout for, the proposed concept layout for this development. This, so 84 units marketed to 55-plus community for that, for that development. One thing to note is, you can kind of see on the west side of that, of that layout there, that there is a significant FEMA floodplain, floodway that serves as a buffer between, between the single-family units on that, on the west and with the more commercial, and what, this will be multifamily on the east side. This, this project, as it is marketed towards 55-plus, does provide a diversity of housing options for, for all stages of, of life within Tyler. And it also does, it also promotes the, you know, balanced growth within our community on the, on the east side, on the east loop. There is, there has been recent development on the, on the East Loop, around Front Street, of new commercial activity there that this will help complement. Some renderings of the, of the, of the layout here. And then the, the third project here is Tyler Crossing, and this is located off of East Gentry Parkway, just northeast of Beckham Avenue and East Gentry. It is south of the Super 1 Foods that's over there. The, this project includes the development of 84 units marketed to the 55-plus community. This project would require, I didn't mention on the previous one, that would require, that would require a zone change to multifamily at, this would, this would as well. I don't have the layout on, on that one up here, but it does show, again, the, the multifamily development on, on this track, on this lot here. This project would help, with it being in the North End, revitalization plan in area, it would achieve some of those goals for additional rooftops within the North End. So we, we do have these, these three projects that are seeking a resolution of support from the city council for their project. It is recommended, therefore, that the city council consider adoption of a resolution of support for various affordable housing tax credit proposals and the approval of the waiver of development and permit fees, up to $500 for each awarded project.
Any questions for Kyle before we move on to the folks' presentations?
I've got two questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Kyle, on the Tyler Crossing, the zoning around that, mostly industrial?
Yes, sir. Everything east of Gentry Parkway on that side is industrially zoned. As you can see on the map, there is, you know, you see the rail facility there and also Dellic Refineries to the east.
Okay. Okay.
I've only got two parts here, but I'm assuming there's three people here to speak. Justin Paris, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Come on out. And if you can just state your name and address for the record. We're going to stick you on a five-minute timer so you don't get too long-winded.
And I'm with Justin and I together. Do you mind if I start?
Sure, that's fine.
Absolutely. Okay. And we'll, we'll be talking about Tyler Crossing.
Five-minute total or five-minute for each?
Five minutes total.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, understood. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Fogle with Trinity Housing Development, and this is my colleague and counterpart, Justin Paris. I'm from Austin, and Justin is here out of our Tyler office. And so Trinity is our development arm, and Hamilton Builders is our construction arm, but we're, we're one and the same and vertically integrated. So, you know, should we be fortunate enough to proceed, we'd be working together as, as we do daily. But we're active across Texas, but kind of last five, or seven or 10 years, our greatest concentration has been in east and northeast Texas. Have been developing in Marshall, three properties in Longview, two of which are new construction, you know, similar to what we'd be talking about here. And then, one of those was the renovation and restoration of a six-story 1920s office building in downtown Longview that's now affordable senior living. And then we've also got some stuff in, in Ennis. And then, just, you know, around the corner in Lyndale, we have a very nice senior property that, that we're proud of, and those are a little bit different, big duplexes. But, you know, we've been looking in Tyler for quite a few years now, just haven't had a property that I was confident and felt good enough about on. We had a couple of things under contract, even submitted a couple of pre-applications to the state agency, but nothing that I felt, you know, was appropriate, you know, to bring before council. So that's kind of why this is the first time we've been here, even though it's, you know, partially our backyard. But so this site at, it's 1095 East Gentry, which is just next to the Super Foods, just northeast of, of where we are here. And we should get into the zoning, but we are excited about this location. I do think it aligns with the city goals in the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan, future land, land use plans. And part of that is, you know, infill housing units within the North End revitalization area. This corridor over there, if you want to call it that, there is industrial zoning that is very accurate and good observation. I do think that's kind of some legacy zoning. There's the railroad track, and then historically, there's been more industrial uses along the south side of, of the railroad there. I guess this is disconnected, but.
Kyle, can you bring up the?
And then the north side, you know, the grocery store is obviously commercially used. So there's, there's a single-family neighborhood that just the corner of it abuts Gentry to the northwest. And then on our side of the railroad, you've got various commercial uses. So I, I do think it's a very compatible use, kind of, I mean, it is mixed use being next door to a grocery store. So I think that'd be a good amenity for, for everyone. And then our, our site plan, the, the building itself would be set back from, from the road. But then with that, you know, we'd have a higher level of insulation and thicker, you know, double-pane windows for soundproofing and deadening, being closer to the railroad tracks. It'd be a three-story elevator service building, lots of ample amenities, both, you know, in units and in the building, in the building and property itself. Fitness center, cyber lounge, plenty of green space with barbecue areas and a community garden, onsite property management and maintenance, and then resident program, of course. And that's both social events, but then other things, health fairs, flu shots, kind of, you know, personal and professional, if you will. Just asking for your support today, this to bring 84 units of, of affordable senior housing, you know, senior housing to Tyler, which is 55 and older. So both working and, and retired folks as well. So would, would love to answer questions, and especially if there's any concerns about the location.
Anybody have any questions?
Sorry, I didn't hear your name.
It's Michael Fogle with Trinity Development. And actually, let me let Justin say a few words, and then we.
Okay, we're going to blow off the timer thing. I want to be, y'all be, I want everybody to have time to, to do their thing. So come on out.
Well, my name's Justin Paris. I have office in Tyler, off of South Broadway. Just wanted to give you guys a comfort level of what would happen if you granted us the opportunity to build this development here in the City of Tyler. I've, as Michael's already kind of spoke to, the relationship between Trinity Developers and Hamilton Builders, I'll briefly kind of reiterate some of those points. I've been working for Hamilton Builders Construction for six years now. Built many new projects over the state of Texas the past six years. Prior to the six years that I've been working with Hamilton Builders, I was lead engineer for Adams Engineering, got up there, Toddler Office. Designed several projects for our developer at, at that time in the state of Texas, also in Oklahoma. I'm very comfortable building the type of product we proposed on the site in Tyler. I have a really great group of subcontractors that I work with in East Texas. My superintendent's local. It's in my backyard. I've been on, I've been on the design side, I've been in the construction side. My superintendent, they would be building this, is my most senior superintendent. As I've said, the, the project that we built in Lyndale was six years ago. So I've been building relationships in East Texas with subs for six years now. Very comfortable for this. This is home for, for me and my family, my wi-. I moved here eight years ago with my wife. My wife and her family's longtime Tyler natives, her and her parents graduated from Robert E. Lee. So, you know, this is home for us. I'd be glad to do one in my backyard and make you guys proud and give, give all of us a project that we can look at and, and feel that we provided a nice affordable housing for the residents of Tyler. If you have any questions on here, I plan on being here for the foreseeable future.
Any questions for Justin?
So all three of these projects are your projects? Is that right?
No. Just the third, just the third project.
Oh, just the third one, okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Michael, Justin, one question. Have y'all given some thoughts to this project being in such an industrial area in the proximity of Dellic for, I hate to say gas odor, wind blow east to west on the project with, since it's geared more towards older people for respiratory concerns or?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's a fair question. Yes, we have been looking at that. Our, we don't have our final environmental study completed. We'll have it back in a few days. We, it does, it does seem like that the, the size of the facility is kind of below the threshold for, for most concerns from, from, from what we've seen. From the regulatory perspective, the, the size is below the threshold for, for most concerns. You know, I've, I've been on this, I've been on the site over the last few months, you know, randomly, it hasn't been scheduled, but, you know, half a dozen times, and I haven't noticed anything. And there's, you know, and there is a, there is, you know, some houses on the other side of Gentry. I think, I have the remaining reports from them, you know, regarding that. You get fair enough, but.
I want to say there were reports when Carrier Air Conditioner was there in that area, which is not that very far from this location. The old carrier is not here anymore.
So there it is.
So, so there's the site plan. Oh, and then, and something else to add, we would be, part of this property is owned by Goodwill. We purchased it from Brookshers. And then we'd also be purchasing an additional eight. So Brookshers owning the Super Foods sold the majority of the property we're proposing on to Goodwill, and then the properties to the west, they still own. And so we'd be purchasing the southwest corner of our site plan from Brookshers, which is kind of a good feature because from y'all's perspective and others' perspective, Brookshers has the final blessing over the site plan and the approval and has to, you know, sign off on our building materials and facade and amenities and appearance for that matter. So it's kind of a good private sector oversight and accountability of the design and appearance of the project.
Okay. Any other questions for?
What do you anticipate the, I mean, you're saying affordable housing. When you're coming from Austin, what do you anticipate the, to be affordable housing in Tyler?
So, yeah, that's a, that's a regulated, regardless of the developer's project that, you know, that's regulated, set in stone, they would be about $700 to $900 a month per, per unit. And, you know, that's for a, a new building, so. But the, the, the general criteria and, and kind of rubric is that no one should be, and it's a little bit, a little bit funky if you have seniors who are retired. It's a little bit different, but no one should be paying more than 30% of their income on, on the rent. So there's different brackets, and people could fall into those different brackets based off of where their income and the rent of units are.
Is that just for a few, some of the units or for all 84? Or some of them market rate, some of them?
It's for all 84, but we could add, we could, if, if that was a preference for council, we could make it a little bit bigger and add market rate units.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Darren Smith. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Darren Smith, 8506 Cary Lane, Raleigh, Texas, 75089. Mayor, Council, Councilman Nguyen, I've been before you last three years in a row and back again. Definitely love Tyler, love to be here. We're proposing a 84-unit senior development off of Southeast Loop 323. We've got a fairly decent presence in East Texas. We've got a property in White House, again, home of the new Super Bowl champion, Patrick Mahomes. So, so we're in White House, we're, we've got a development in Lufkin, we've got development in Palestine, and we're working on our second development in Lufkin right now. And just wanted to be in Palestine. I mean, I've been here every year, I'll be here next year. I'll be here till, I can't drive to, to Tyler anymore. But we, we've spent considerable time looking at this development. I'm the minority partner in the development, and it was a decision that I made to work with local contractors, Cliff Harris, excuse me, Cliff Harris and Derek Watson with Jacoby Brothers, to help us with the site plan, to make sure that we were away from the flood zone, and that gave us a great barrier in between the single-family behind it. And quite frankly, it's a tough site that needs some economic incentive to develop and where it's located. And so we thought that this was a good spot for a senior facility. There, you know, local school or school near it, you know, for walking. We do have our site amenity package that will have a walking trail, that will have, you know, barbecues, will have the senior center, resource center that we partner with local nonprofits to provide local senior services. And, and we try to do it in a very organized fashion. As we went through our COVID scare in 2020, we've just learned you kind of have to keep those functions small, but, but eloquent and have them more frequently. So we've done a really good job of managing that process throughout the state. You know, we, I mean, I can go on. You've heard presentations. I don't want to take, you know, 10 minutes, but you've seen me here. We've got product that's near you that if you wanted to see. And, you know, I just would love to be in Tyler.
Any questions for Justin?
Justin, have y'all reached out to the neighborhood behind you?
Actually, Justin Gregory's an analyst that submitted. My name's Darren Smith.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, yes, sir.
Have you reached out to the neighborhood behind you? You've got a great buffer.
Right.
Already in place, but. Already in place, but anytime you introduce multifamily with a neighborhood kind of behind you, they're gonna?
That's correct, and we have the zoning piece that we do have to go through. We have tried to find any HOA that's associated back there, and we have not had that luck, but we know prior to any zoning activity, we have to have those meetings. And quite frankly, they will influence the final design of what happens. Even though we've been working with Jacoby Brothers, they're gonna influence what finally happens there, in accordance with city regulations, of course. So that has to happen, or we don't believe we will get that zoning.
Any other questions for Darren?
Speaking of HOA, will there be one?
In the property?
This property?
No, we typically don't have an HOA in the property, so that's a kind of a legal, I don't think we could meet that mandate, quite frankly. But if it's something we can look into, we can look into, but because it's a single property, we're responsible for the maintenance and maintaining it. And we self-manage, we're vertically integrated, so we are the management company, we are the asset management company, and we're the developer.
I wasn't suggesting that, just a question.
Okay, no, all right, sure.
So do y'all hold on to these long-term or do y'all flip it?
No, we've never sold a property, we've developed, almost 10,000 units.
Any other questions? All right.
Thanks, sir.
I don't have a card here, but I assume somebody's here for More Grocery Loss. Morning. Name and address for the record.
Mayor Warren, my name is Quinn Gormley, I'm with Fish Pond Development. I'm actually out of Austin, Texas, and this is my colleague, Dave Fornier.
Hi, Dave Fornier, just recently moved to South Carolina, but was in Austin.
Welcome to Texas.
Welcome back to Texas. We've been trying to drag him back for some time. Mayor Warren, Councilmember, thank you so much for having us. We appreciate the opportunity for coming up and speaking. We'll make sure we get on the register too with all our information. We're here representing More Grocery Loss, which is a very close shot to where we're currently standing. It's a great development, it was, it's been through, obviously, as many of us know, it's gone through its transitions as a furniture store, a grocery store, and then eventually a bank. It was redeveloped in 2006 and 2007 using historical tax credits and was converted to an affordable housing development available to families and residents of the inner city. In this case, the property has achieved its first 15 years of affordability, which is actually a tax credit program mandate. There's an additional 15 years of affordability that's called the compliance period or affordability period that has remained in place. The opportunity is to recapitalize and redo these developments and revitalize the developments comes within that first 15 years. Without this type of development program and the funding that is extracted through the sale of the loan of housing tax credits, it's really difficult to recapitalize these types of developments. So we're excited to be here, we think that we have a great project, great design, a lot of ideas to redevelop a lot of those units. You saw a lot of the space, but maintaining the historic nature of the development is always going to be optimum for us. So, but the continuation of affordability and giving the residents another bite of high-quality affordable housing is going to be key.
Yeah, I'll just add, as part of the renovation, we'll also increase the number of units available to persons at 50% of AMI. So we'll increase the affordability component there. But as Quinn mentioned, it is an existing affordable housing, but there's the opportunity to do a full renovation only comes every once in a while as the stars align with TDHCA. In this particular case, it scores well. Our plan is to use historic tax credits as well as the low-income housing tax credits and completely, you know, refurbish the property. And I think it ties well with the downtown initiative. You know, if you've been by the property, it's, you know, the exterior is getting kind of weathered, and so this is a great opportunity to really renovate the property and make it tie in well with the downtown.
And in closing from our end, as David mentioned, we'll be at 30% area B income, 50% area A income, and 60% area B income. So it'll be kind of rebalancing of those set aside. So rents will be 400 to that $800 level. So kind of keeping where it's at, but also adding some additional affordability.
Any questions for these gentlemen?
I got one, and I guess it could be for any three of y'all. If council awards or says yes to all three, where does everybody rank in the grand scheme of things with the state? Are all three all in contention to get awarded, or is it just going to be one for the area?
It's, you know, it's a great question. The challenge has always been, you go in and there's a couple bites at the apple that takes. Scoring is the first, being that you've met the amenities and the requirements and you've reached out to the local neighborhoods and you've done the nonprofit organizations. You've met all those kind of intricacies of that. The second part is the underwriting part, to make sure it underwrites and it moves forward. And then they kind of make a combined decision and do that award through the board meeting. We score very well because we're a historic development. I've seen two other great projects up here that you guys have. So, you know, it really kind of comes down to that decision and how they kind of lay it out. We feel very firmly that the historic nature of the development and the fact that it's bringing additional leverage is going to weigh heavy in that scoring component, so.
But regarding the scoring component, it's 17 points if we do a resolution for whoever gets the support.
That is correct.
Yes, sir.
That is correct. Yeah, the critical thing, without the letter of support, the deal just doesn't score. It doesn't get funded.
Well, one thing I'll say, and this is to all three applicants. You know, one year, several years ago, we did a resolution of support for all three. And it, wow, I mean, it just, it didn't help anybody out because everybody was just on an even playing field. So I think ever since then, we've tried to redo it to where we try to pick out one. And I hope that's what we do today, is we try to pick out one of three and not just say we're good with everybody.
Yeah, you understand and respect that, Mayor. And the resources for the credit program are so difficult to combine and such a competitive nature of the program, that it's fairly difficult. You know, I also work with the city of BK, I'm the president of Economic Development Board. I can tell you now, we're fighting for affordability. My mayor would stand behind me and tell you that right now. So any chance that there's an opportunity for affordability and preserving affordability, it's got to make that a priority.
Okay, question too. During your project, the renovation rehab, are y'all going to vacate tenants? You're all going enclosed floors, you're going to empty the building? Have y'all given any thought to current tenants, what y'all are going to do with them?
Great question, thank you so much for asking that.
Yeah, it would be a tenant-in-place renovation, so we would temporarily relocate residents while we renovate their units, and then we'll be doing exterior work at the same time. So the tenants will be relocated, or a handful of tenants at a time will be relocated to temporary housing, and then we'll move them back in and then kind of batch the units.
The objective is the property is pretty much to maintain 94% of occupancy for a long period of time. Typically, what you do, because there are steps and requirements with the Relocation Act that you have to do with displacing tenants, not to mention the public aspect of that. So it's managing that occupancy, and you basically rehab the vacant units and then you move tenants that are currently in their unit to a newer unit. That is the most optimum thing, that's basically what we're planning on doing here.
And you're going to relocate them at your expense?
Correct, it's in our budget.
All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll discuss this up here, but before we do, thank you to all three applicants that have chosen an interest in Tyler, and so we do appreciate it. Thank you. So what's y'all's thoughts?
I got one follow-up with Kyle. Kyle, in the past, we've lost these projects to Longview, it seems like, and that's always been, those projects have had better site locations. But looking at the self-score, how big of a, should we look at that self-score? How much should that play a role in moving forward with one of these projects?
So with the self-score, that's how they, you know, how many points they anticipate receiving. There is a tiebreaker with that. And so with the projects that have the pre-rank or the self-score, of the three that we have here today, the highest is the Reserve at Tyler, which is the one on the East Loop. And that self-score matches one in Longview as well. And so those, if you consider everything being equal, you know, with resolutions of support, they're going to probably tie in that regard. And so the tiebreaker is actually the lower amount is the higher amount, because that is kind of the proximity to other amenities. And so that's kind of a distance. So the tiebreaker, the lower tiebreaker amount is, you know, is the one that wins out. That said, if we consider the self-scores and then the, you know, choosing the one to support, that could give them a better chance to Tyler project if everything being equal. They tie, and then there's, my understanding is there's an evaluation of those amenities and whether they qualify, you know, in actuality. Because again, these are applications that, so maybe I'm not sure if they've been verified to this point, but the better, if all things being equal, the higher score of our Tyler applications would keep it on par with other cities.
Go on your answer.
That's kind of why I asked my question. Who's going to be kind of at the top if they get the resolution? None of these are in my district, so I'm going to defer.
They're in James and Robert. They all have three, all three of them have different positives, some have negatives.
I kind of agree with James's point concerning the locational Super One Foods with the industrial aspect to it, and also some other environmental concerns you have over there with folks that already live there.
That's right.
Behind Super One Foods and that type of draw. So those are some concerns I'd have about that particular development.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we consider adoption of resolution for the Reserve at Tyler.
All right, we got a motion by Wynn, second by McGee. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for Reserve at Tyler. Or is that right?
Right.
Okay, thank you to all of you. All right, R2. Five-minute timer on that last one didn't work out so well.
Mayor, Council? Cameron Williams, traffic engineer for City of Tyler. So this is a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into advanced funding agreements with Texas Department of Transportation for carbon reduction program projects. So just a little bit of background on these. We got that. So in 2021, bipartisan infrastructure law created the carbon reduction program to reduce transportation emissions. So that program or legislation allocated money to the metropolitan planning organizations to achieve that program's goal. And TechDOT oversees that program. And so we've been working with TechDOT and Michael Howell at the Tyler Area MPO to develop two projects within the city of Tyler for that funding. First project to tell you about is it upgrades vehicle detection at 11 signalized intersections on the South Glenwood, North Palace, and Front Street corridors. These were all corridors that were identified as part of that downtown traffic study that as we do improvements, we want to improve traffic flow on these. There's older detection at these intersections that either doesn't work or the manufacturer does not longer support if we had to get replacement parts. So that's kind of what played into the selection of these. This also includes installation of conduit and cabling, because these are older intersections, trying to run new cabling in that conduit there would be difficult. And so also with this program, you can see we've got an estimated cost of about just over $1 million. It does require an 80/20 match, but because of the location of these, it falls into this transportation development credits, which covers that 20% local match. So basically, there is 0% local dollars to achieve this program or this project. The second project installs pedestrian signals, push buttons, and curb rants at five signalized intersections in the city of Tyler. So we have a lot of signalized intersections that have no pedestrian facilities. And so these are five locations that we know that we've had requests, that we have demand at, which helped us identify those. So they will include installation of those facilities. And again, it would require a 20% match, but also TechDOT was able to find those transportation development credits that we're able to use for that. So again, you're seeing about $1.1 million project for this that are 0% at this time from the local government percentage. And kind of put that in perspective, we programmed in our ITS master plan about $1.1, $1.2 million a year. So these two projects alone are covering almost two years that we would spend. So helping us do more faster as far as upgrading our projects, our signalized system to improve traffic flow, and also provide more options for people to get out of their cars, cross streets, in a safer manner. So with that, it is requested that the city council adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager as designated representative of the city of Tyler to execute advanced funding agreements with the Texas Department of Transportation for the carbon reduction program projects.
Hard to argue against something that's costing the city nothing.
Yeah.
Two million dollars worth of improvements.
Cameron, can you very briefly, very briefly explain vehicle detection? You come up to an intersection, there's no cars coming, your light never changes. What's going on?
So very simply, that vehicle detection and most of what we're using in Tyler, we've got lots of different technology, but a lot of times it's video. So it's looking to see if there's a vehicle present at that intersection. And if so, then it gives information to the controller that's at that intersection to make decisions and to serve that vehicle or not serve that vehicle.
Okay. If that helps. He's still having a stop. Yeah. I'm backing up and moving forward and it's still.
Just run it.
Well.
I didn't say that. Any other questions for Cameron?
Move to Proubar two.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Keller, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cameron. R3, okay.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
The item before you, R3, is a resolution authorizing eminent domain proceedings providing the necessity and public purpose for sanitary sewer system upgrades near Winwood Drive as a part of the consent decree program. So a little bit of background, the city of Tyler has contracted with KSA to inspect and assess our creek crossings. In 2021, several of the assessed creek crossings were identified as needing to be rerouted in order to improve the condition and protect that asset in the future. In order to reroute this sanitary sewer line, the acquisition of an easement interest across the property at 3802 Winwood Drive is necessary for the public purposes of the construction, operation, and maintenance of the sewer system in and around Winwood Drive. Since April 2022, the Tyler Water Utilities Department, through a right-of-way agent along with assistance from the city attorney's office, has attempted to negotiate with the property owners and subsequently the legal representatives for the property owners. The city and the property owners are unable to agree for the value of the easement interest and damages for the remainder. And as a result, the city has no recourse but to seek condemnation of the easement interest for the public purposes of the construction. of the easement interest for the public purposes of the construction, operation, and maintenance of the sanitary sewer system in and around Winwood Drive. So I'm here to request that the city council consider adopting a resolution authorizing eminent domain proceedings for the acquisition of an easement interest across the property owned by Stephen A. Pickett and Elaine Hill Almond Pickett, providing the necessity and public purpose for sanitary sewer system upgrades near Winwood Drive as a part of the consent decree program.
And Mayor, before, kind of, Council, or for you all here, or for Council, I'd like to ask if the city attorney wouldn't mind kind of walking you through how the eminent domain proceedings process works. Because sometimes I think there's, the states change it a couple of different times, and then also there's possibly some familiarity with it. And so Deborah, if you don't mind, just kind of tell them a little bit about the fact that there's a whole, this kicks off a whole separate process that we go through.
Yes, so Mayor and Council, after we go through this process with the council deciding whether to approve the resolution, then we go back and we file with the court. And the court then appoints three commissioners. And we go through notices with the property owner at that time to ensure that they understand and know who the commissioners are. There is a process for them to object to that. But once we get to the three commissioners that are appointed by the court, then there is an actual hearing with respect to the value of the property. And it's a, just like a regular hearing, the property owner gets an opportunity to present any evidence and be represented as well. And the commissioners at that point make a recommendation for the value of the property, a fair and accurate value. And that goes back to the court. The city then has an opportunity to pay value for that property. And then we move forward with the development that we need. But that's, in a nutshell, the process that happens from here on out. Now, throughout this process, there's always the opportunity for negotiations and the ability to come to a settlement if property owners decide that they want to talk to the city. However, if not, that would be the process that we would engage in.
What's the timeline on that, Deborah?
It really depends on the court, but we've seen it happen within six to nine months.
So Kate, if it's six to nine months, does that delay the work that your group needs to do?
Well, in all honesty, at this point, we, we have been a little bit delayed, but we are, we have worked around it. So at this point, this, this is our last absolute point to get to. But we will, we will be fine with the work as long as we can stay on schedule with getting these proceedings started. Because as I said, we, we've been working since April of 2022 to try and come to an agreement.
Any other questions for Kate or Deborah? Yeah, and Kate, so this is, so this vote is to start that process or not?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And if we do, the property owner, is the property owner losing the property? If we decide to do it?
That's correct, yes.
But it's an easement.
It's an easement.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so they can still, it's just an easement, yeah.
The easement's being forced on the property. They still have, they still have the surface use of the property, correct?
Correct.
To some extent.
Yeah, to some extent. So we don't want them building a home over it.
So they couldn't build over the easement?
They can't build on the easement.
Right.
Well, you couldn't build there anymore.
Does, do we normally talk to the property owners first before we file the motions?
Absolutely. We have, we have staff in the, yeah, we have staff in the field that have, and it's a part of state law that we're required to make several attempts, make notices of the property owner, and we continually do that. So we're really at our last resort at this point, where we've not been able to come to a resolution.
Kate, y'all have looked at all avenues of workarounds, redirecting.
Correct.
One area for the betterment of a larger body of people.
Right, right. And this was, this is, at this point, the only option moving forward.
Is there anything on this property right now? Is there a house?
Well, if I understand it correctly, there's three crate myrtles.
Yes.
And the value of the crate myrtles is pretty much what's being questioned here. Is we, how you, the property owner has a value and we're at odds.
Yeah, and I don't, it just, just to make sure that we don't get too far kind of filled of this item and kind of, legally, we can be allowed to talk about it at this point. But yes, there's not a structure that's over the property currently.
Okay.
There is vegetation, there is disagreement about the value of that property. And that's where I would kind of leave it at this point.
I felt like you just slapped my wrist.
Do not slap your wrist.
You don't slap the king's wrist.
Yes, I do.
We kiss the wrist.
I did just protect you.
Any other questions for staff? We don't have one card. Go ahead. Okay, Michael Talbott, you want to come up? Mr. Talbott, if you can just state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mayor, council members, city manager, city attorney, city clerk. My name is Michael Talbott, 4524 Edinburgh Drive, Tyler, Texas. I'm limited in my ability to speak about the specifics of this particular property, but in my experience regarding the consent decree and sewer projects, I have run into some obfuscation. So I'm gonna talk in general terms, general principles.
I'm sorry, Mr. Talbott, this item is specifically about a resolution for a, an imminent domain on that property. So it would need to be in light of that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So the city council is considering exercising its power of eminent domain to get an easement across private property. So I will address that. Okay.
Senator, do the timer on this, three minutes. Do you have that? We're friends. You got it. Keep going.
Okay. In capacity as representatives of the citizens of Tyler, your first priority is to tend to defend the life, liberty, and property of the people. I understand that you all are on the city council, but your first priority is to protect those private property rights. The fact that a higher authority, I understand this is part of the consent decree and the EPA, even though a higher authority is requiring the city to act in a responsible and proper manner, that does not diminish your responsibility to advocate for the private property owner. So I appreciate your question, Mr. McGee, regarding has there been contact with the property owner? Appreciate your comment, Mr. Wynn, asking for alternative routes. In discussion regarding the power of eminent domain, it was suggested that a property owner should follow the example of members of the council. I understand that some members of this council have encountered easements across their property. And I was told that they voluntarily and willingly accepted that easement because they were in a financial position, whether it was net worth or income, to make that sacrifice. Not everybody is in that position. So even though you may not feel that those crate myrtles are valuable, this property owner does. So don't assume that your view of those crate myrtles is the same as theirs. So please understand that not everybody is in the same position you are. And lastly, moving an easement, and, you know, again, I don't know the details of this, whether the current easement runs in the creek or not. But moving an easement from public property to private property suggests a matter of convenience more than necessity. So to Mr. Wynn's point, let's make sure that every effort is being made to avoid infringing on those private property rights. So I'm gonna ask that you all be transparent after the motion is made and discuss your position so that the public understands your position on the exercise of eminent domain.
Thank you, Mr. Talbott. Kate, have we exercised everything we can do for alternate routes?
Yes.
And have you found any alternate routes that are acceptable?
No.
I have a question, sir. What is the relationship for Mr. Talbott to this property? Or was he just speaking on behalf of the citizens yet?
Yeah.
Answer?
He, he was just speaking, I think, on behalf of the citizens.
Any other questions for Kate? Move to approve. Second. Got a motion by Nick, seconded by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kate. O1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
I have O1. It's a request that the city council consider adoption of an ordinance amending the Tyler City Code, Chapter 3, Civil Service Classification Plan, by amending the Civil Service Classification Plan and number of authorized civil service positions for fiscal year 2023, 2024. The Tyler Police and Fire are tied together in this ordinance, so there's not a request to change anything on the police side. This is just fire. So we see an opportunity here to strengthen our training staff. So this would add a senior captain to the training staff and delete a captain from our numbers. So overall, numbers will not change. We're also gonna take another staff captain and add it to this training group. So there'll be three people there to train the entire department as well as our recruit training class. So the request is that the city council consider adoption of an ordinance amending Tyler City Code, Chapter 3, Civil Service Plan, by amending the Civil Service Classification Plan and number of authorized civil service positions for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Chief?
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, seconded by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Chief. M1. Nikki.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Nikki Ingram, and I'm here to present agenda item M1 to award a construction contract for the Earl Campbell Gravity Sewer Main Project. The Earl Campbell Lift Station is located on Earl Campbell Parkway, just east of Truvine Brewing Company. This lift station is in need of rehabilitation, and a cost analysis was done. And we found that it was roughly the same price to abandon the lift station and install a gravity sewer main. So this project will include the demolition of existing, of the existing lift station, abandonment of 1,950 linear feet of 3-inch force main, the construction of approximately 3,900 linear feet of 8-inch gravity sewer main, the construction of 13 manholes, and the relocation and/or abandonment of 2,045 linear feet of existing gravity sewer main and to existing creek crossings. And the construction timeline is about four months. So the Earl Campbell Gravity Sewer Main Project was publicly advertised, and bids were opened and read aloud on January 23, 2024. We received eight bids, and the lowest responsible bidder was AE Scholl &amp; Company in the amount of $795,208.20. So it is my recommendation that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with AE Scholl &amp; Company for the construction of the Earl Campbell Gravity Sewer Main Project in the amount of $795,208.20 and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Any questions for Nikki? I've got one. Is your baby part of the Bring Your Baby to Work program?
Yes, she is.
And your baby's not with you?
No, she is with Ms. Pam in the office, so.
So how do you like that program?
Oh, I love it. I've been blessed with a really good baby, and so she just, she just chills and hangs out in all the meetings, and she's been really good. So, well, I love it. Get a bond with my baby more, and she'll be starting daycare here soon in a couple months.
Well, we're looking forward to our graduation.
Thank you.
You're showing a king's concern for all of his subjects.
All right. I want to take the motion. Second. Got a motion by McGee, seconded by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Nikki.
Thank you.
You can leave now if you need to go take care of that baby.
Once again, king's concern.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jake Yankew, Tyler Water Utilities, and I'm here to present agenda items M2 and M3. Starting with M2, the South Glenwood Ground Storage Tank Demolition.
Amen.
Yay.
It's your birthday.
Happy Valentine's Day. Great Valentine's.
So the South Glenwood Ground Storage Tank is geographically located in the middle of Glenwood Boulevard between Lindsay Lane and Connolly Street, where the road splits to go around the tank. The tank was constructed in the 1940s, and it is located right next to well number two. The ground storage tank was used to store and treat well water before distributing it into the city. This location was in service for over 50 years and was decommissioned in the 90s. Even though it's no longer in service, during a TCEQ inspection during the summer of 2022, we were given a violation on the ground storage tank regarding the condition of the exterior. So rather than having an asset that's not utilized and has to be maintained in the form of painting and rehabilitating frequently, TWU has chosen to demolish the entire well and the ground storage tank. The plugging of well two is included in a separate project that is going to decommission and plug several other wells that are no longer in service around town. And the demolition of the tank would be encompassed in the scope of this project. This project would also include removing the fence around the tank, the retaining wall, and the brick building on site, and cutting and plugging the existing water lines. Coordination with overhead electric and traffic control will be required in the construction phase to ensure safety of the traveling public and the workers performing the work. It is noteworthy that in the future, this site may be utilized for a monopole that would house an AMI antenna for collecting meter readings. So design for the demo plan is expected to be five months with a consulting fee of $87,500, and with a two-month construction schedule that's estimated to cost $275,000. So with that, I would like to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering services contract in the amount of $87,500 with KSA engineering for the South Glenwood Ground Storage Tank Demolition and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Any questions for Jacob?
Second.
You gotta make a lot of people happy. I'm not sure we make the most. Well, she's too young. Let's get this done.
Kate, got a motion by McGee, seconded by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M3.
So M3 is for the Bellwood Lift Station Improvements. So the existing Bellwood Lift Station is located on the north shoreline of Bellwood Lake and was constructed in the late 70s to provide sewer service to the area shown here on the West Loop. This lift station currently serves a basin that is over 3,100 acres and has three other lift stations, along with a gravity sewer network, that feed into it. Some of the customers that ultimately feed into the Bellwood Lift Station are All Saints, The Cascades, Sam's Club, TJC West Campus, and several car dealerships. The current runtime on the pumps, yeah, the current runtime on pumps in the lift station are constant, and this lift station has historically been an issue concerning maintenance. Sand, rags, and other debris is constantly cleaned out of the lift station and is very hard on the pumps, and they have to be maintained and replaced periodically. So there is currently a planned development on the west front. So there is currently a planned development on the west frontage of Loop 323, the Bellwood Edition Phase One, that's approximately 40 acres, that will bring additional commercial, retail, and residential to the drainage basin. The development is just north of Sam's Club, and the current site plan was approved in November of 2022. There's also discussion of developing the remaining 500 acres in additional phases that would in turn increase the sewer flow in the area to the Bellwood Lift Station. So in April of 2023, KSA began to conduct a study of the existing lift station conditions, pumping capacity, and a force main evaluation. During this study, an in-depth investigation was made to gather all the existing data on the lift station to make future growth estimations and assumptions and to provide multiple recommendations for the path forward. It was found that the pumping capacity of the existing lift station is substantially undersized for the current flow estimates. The firm pumping capacity is shown here of 300 gallons per minute, and the total pumping capacity is 600 gallons per minute, both of which are falling short of our average daily flow of almost 1,100 gallons per minute. So this validates the constant runtimes that we see on the pumps currently. In order to project the future flow demands, KSA used the existing property zoning and assigned flow rates based on what it's currently zoned as. And this yielded an average daily flow of almost 3,000 gallons per minute for maximum buildout of this drainage basin. So two recommendations were provided from the study. The first proposed a replacement of the lift station with a new wet well, new pumps, and associated electrical equipment upgrades. The existing eight-inch force main would be upsized and replaced with an 18-inch force main up to the point where it discharges into our gravity sewer network. There's an existing 24-inch gravity main that would also need to be upsized to a 30-inch line, and that eventually discharges into the Greenbrier Lift Station. So option one of replacing and upgrading the lift station force main had a pre-engineering cost estimate of $13 million. Option two would abandon the existing lift station, force main, and gravity main and replace it all with a new 30-inch gravity line that flows in an alternative alignment to achieve the gravity flow. And the pre-engineering cost estimate of option two is $15.7 million. So although option two is more expensive, it is the preferred option for this situation in order to eliminate the lift station in our collection system. Gravity mains are highly favorable compared to a lift station because of the ongoing maintenance and attention that lift stations require. By abandoning the Bellwood Lift Station, the city sees a great benefit in eliminating the liability of maintaining pumps and the risk associated with having a lift station so close to a water source. So as we've already touched on, the study portion of this project is complete, and based on those findings, we have determined the preferred path forward to replace the force main with the gravity line. In order to verify that this option is in fact feasible with the existing topography and land layout, the contract being presented today is solely for the design survey of the project. The data will be gathered and analyzed to determine the direction for design and how to move this project forward. The analysis is anticipated to be complete in May, and then we'll move forward with design that is expected to be complete in March of 2025. At this point, we're estimating 18 months for construction. So with that, I would like to request that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to execute an engineering services contract in the amount of $85,000 with KSA Engineering for the Bellwood Lift Station Improvements and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
So Jacob, if the 540 acres was not being developed, would you spend $15 million to redo all this?
So the existing lift station is undersized based on the pumping capacity that it has, and we need upgrades currently as it is. So the upgrades would be needed. Regardless of development.
Okay.
Does the existing line, the existing line, I guess, doesn't travel where you showed the proposed one, obviously, or you wouldn't have the lift station now, I suppose?
Correct. So in this slide, it shows the existing force main. So this is actually the alignment of the existing force main, and that is the proposed that would follow closely the existing. And then the, the gravity line is shown here, and it is a slightly different alignment to achieve that gravity flow. But, but that's what we're going to find out, that we can do. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, it's pretty marshy. It goes behind the dam of the Bellwood Lake, and so this is a very vegetated area. So we just need more information to confirm that option two is feasible. And this design survey cost, it would be incurred regardless in the design phase of this project.
Any other questions for Jacob?
In this, I know the upsides and the lines, so this is in anticipation of all the possible development that's, not just the new development, but what possibly is to be done.
This is max buildout for the full 540 acres, and really of the full drainage basin. They looked at the whole 31 acres, or 3,100 acres.
Move to approve in three.
Second. Got a motion by Curtis, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob. All right, we are down to the consent agenda. We want to approve as presented.
Move to approve the consent agenda is written.
Thank you.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Managers Report.
Mayor and Council, a few items to note, one of which on Sunday morning, as y'all probably were awoken by the hailstorm, that was pretty massive. One of the things that we experienced, really the only damage we had, was regarding a lightning strike that happened at the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant. And so with that lightning damage that affected electronic equipment throughout the plant, it was determined that the plant could no longer remain in operation and had to be shut down. At that point on Sunday morning, the Lake Palestine Water Treatment Plant increased production so supply, to supply the entire city with water. We were kind of concerned about, well, how long would this take to get back in operation? Would it be as far as 24, 48 hours, somewhere in that timeframe? And I want to just kind of, as far as give a, just gratitude for the staff there, because they worked to resolve as many issues as possible and called a vendor for support that was necessary to resolve the problems further. All of them worked together to find a solution to the issues to get the plant back in operation as soon as possible. After spending most of the day offline, the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant was back in production that night. While it would take quite a while to fully replace all the damaged equipment from the lightning strike, the efforts of staff and our vendor resulted in a rapid response that effectively meant the plant was back in service much faster than anyone could have anticipated. And so we say a thank you to the following Tyler Water Utilities water production staff members. Scott Logue, who's the chief operator, Ken Johnson, plant operator two, Mark Hagan, the plant operator two, Jordan Reasoner, plant operator two, Ben Sandoval, plant operator two, Rick Sanders, plant operator three, and who assisted by phone, and with David Lowe with Lockton Design, who was our consultant on the project. So we have, we're especially gracious to them for just their hard work and ingenuity in taking something that could have been down for a considerable few days and getting it back up into operation very quickly.
Is that something that insurance can help cover replacement costs?
For the, we will file it, and we'll see where that goes with our insurance. Just as you with your roof, everything, everybody else. It's a matter of the insurance companies, just kind of see where that goes. Plus also, we are self-insured, so there is a certain part of that where it comes back to us.
Is there also like a giant valve, and somebody goes out in the middle of the night and turns it to get all Lake Palestine water in, or?
How's that work? Is there a button?
There's actually a button. It's a computer panel that they, you know, kind of touch. Yeah, so.
I wonder if Kate was out there cracking.
She might have been. Kate has been known to go trek out in the middle of the night into the woods if needed. So she'll give it her all. Nikki and the baby did not get, I guess, for concerns there. So. Shallow Road, speaking on water, and saying on that, Shallow Road Water Tower improvements, the Shallow Road Elevated Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project has moved now into the underground phase upon completion of the above-ground tank painting and rehabilitation. That was completed by the end of last year, so many people kind of saw that over on Trup Highway of the work that was being done there. And so now it comes apart that they won't see, but that we have to further finishing out. And so the package booster pump station is scheduled to arrive pretty much in mid-February, so about this point, to hit another project milestone. The city was recently informed of a long lead time for the 480-volt electric panel that won't be here till about August of 2024. So this lead time is the result of the supply chain backups that have been seen across multiple projects with similar equipment. We want to give our thanks and gratitude to the Smith County Master Gardeners, who helped to clear out some of the beds at the Goodman and LeGrand Museum to prepare for spring plantings. And so many new plants, shrubs, and trees will be coming to the Goodman and LeGrand Museum grounds this spring in preparation for the Bee Observatory that we're moving over there. Remember, B City. I sometimes forget that myself. There'll be a move from the Tyler Rose Garden to the Goodman and LeGrand's. And then finally, this Saturday, if you're like me, where you want to like to pick up tree seedlings that will probably die because you don't know how to take care of them, probably, the Tyler Trees Committee will be handing out free tree seedlings at the Christus Trinity Mother Francis Hospital down in South Tyler from 8:00 a.m. to noon. Those actually go very quickly. Good amount of people come out to be able to enjoy that. And so.
What kind of trees?
What kind of trees? Free trees? There's sticks that will grow into something, maybe an oak, maybe, yeah, maybe a pine. Yeah, see what happens.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
All right, any comments for the city manager for review?
I got one. Ed, just like to commend the Tyler Street Department and our Brick Street Contractor, Art Riley, for the work they did over in Dobbs College area. The neighbors are very appreciative.
Oh, good. Yeah, that's, that has been a great project, and, yeah, we have a great contractor on that.
Anybody else?
Yes, I do. First, I want to say Happy Black History Month to everyone, and the city of Tyler and Tyler Independent School District is collaborating. It's been an amazing program, and I'd like to see some of our colleagues that's on the bench here to attend. The next program is Sunday, and it's our faith, and it will be at Brookville Park from 3 until 5. And we will end with a banquet that will be March the 1st at Willbrook Country Club at 6:00 p.m. So we'd like to see some show up for this Black History Program. They've been outstanding, so thank you.
All right, Al, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right. We are adjourned.